Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for February 24, 2021 to order. The time is now six o'clock. If you may, if I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which is Item B in our agenda tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I appreciate Councilmember Beaton's location tonight for that. Item C is our roll call of council members. Councilmember Gary Molinar.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Holst.
Here.
Councilmember Mary Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Iris Carreras.
Here.
Councilmember Richard Boxsmith.
Here.
And Councilmember Juan Morales.
Present.
Thank you. Under Consent Agenda, we have Items A, B, C, and D. This consists of minutes, payroll checks, and claims.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Under Reports Tonight, Item A is our review of emails from the public. Peter Donovan. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council. Yeah, as long as council is meeting virtually like this and the public is unable to address you in person, the public has the opportunity to send comments to council and have them read in council meetings. And you do that by emailing council@mountvernonwa.gov. So you can email those comments in prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of their meeting, and that'll be read at the next meeting that they have. So we have three emails tonight to read. And the first one is from Nancy Thomas. Nancy writes, "So here we are several weeks after first contacting you, and there is still no resolution to the problem with your street. We now do not get garbage services unless we put the cans where you demanded, but now get no mail service because the cans are in the way of the mailbox. We tried moving the mailbox, but the post office said, 'No, we can't.' So what do you suggest we do? I can't believe we have to go through all of this. We can't even try to sell the house because your piece of property has us landlocked and it does not drain, and you, the city, refuse to do anything about it. Our next recourse is to go to the media to let everyone know that the city is not willing to fix their problem or work with us. Your solution is to vacate at our expense, not happening. Why would we want to buy swamp and pay taxes on it? Still, you have not fixed the damage caused by a garbage truck, which was worse than they admit to, and it is your street to maintain, not mine. So where to now? No one is listening, and the frustration level is very high. I would like a quick response. Once again, as a reminder, for 62 years, Mount Vernon has said this was a street, but once a problem arose on December 10, 2020, they want nothing to do with it." Nancy Thomas. The next email is from John Whalick. John writes, "Dear council members, my wife and I would like for you to propose the creation of a quiet zone for the train crossing at Section Street. This is a quality-of-life issue, which you can all agree has great value. This area is significantly residential, which is different than most of the rest of the crossings in Mount Vernon, making this a high-value endeavor. We know this issue came up at last week's meeting discussing the broad scope of establishing quiet zones throughout the city and the difficulties and expense of such a large undertaking. However, we are specifically interested in a small subset of the all-encompassing scope that was brought up. So council members, please don't be overwhelmed by last week's presentation, which involved a much larger scope than the very specific project we are proposing. We have done some preliminary investigation on establishing quiet zones, and this particular crossing meets any of the criteria we have come across. We have mentioned this idea to area neighbors, and 100% of them have been enthused by the idea and have said they would be glad to sign a petition or offer their support to see this project through. They have all agreed that this is a quality-of-life issue and negatively affects property values. Due to COVID, our efforts have been halted as we are not able to easily visit all of our neighbors. If you require it, we will once again promptly solicit input and support from our neighbors. Logically speaking, the project should be straightforward to complete. These are already crossing gates. There are already crossing gates at the intersection. The only additions needed would be a curb down the center line on either side, just like what was recently added at the crossing to Kincaid, adding a right-turn-only sign to the alley on the northwest corner and signs identifying that no horn will be sounded. To those who may question the safety of such a crossing, I would suggest looking at the one recently created in Bow. With the gate down and the curb in place, you cannot cheat the system. If there is concern for pedestrian safety, one would argue that the whole stretch from Blackburn to Kincaid is being used as a pedestrian corridor and that the sounding of a horn at Section Street creates no additional improvement to pedestrian safety than exists currently. This is of high importance to us and our neighbors, and we will continue to pursue the completion of this project. We have been working with present and past council members for over a year now with little progress. Some of this delay is due to COVID, but we no longer can put the blame on that and must find a way to make progress. We would be glad to meet with anyone who wishes to discuss this in further detail, and we will avail ourselves to assist in any way that we can. Sincerely, John Whalick and Sue Howard." And finally, an email from Scott Correa. "Greetings, councilmen. First, thanks for the notes and kind thoughts. They make things easier. A number of years ago, I brought forward to the council a proposal for a railroad quiet zone. At the time, what I thought to be simple response to neighborhood noise turned out to be the start of my examination process of train noise, the rules and regulations behind the current operating processes and the impact of the federal regulations for train signaling. I respectfully ask you to leave things as they are. There is solid data showing that safe train operations and federally mandated train signaling go hand in hand. If we decide to create a quiet zone, and it is allowed to do so, we will be placing our citizens at a statistically provable higher risk of collisions. Ultimately, it comes down to this. We, as drivers and pedestrians, have come to rely on the commonality of signaling nationwide to keep us safe. Mount Vernon already has one of the highest incidence of pedestrian deaths by train impacts within our city limits in the country. Removing train signaling would only add to the lack of awareness pedestrians have and reduce reaction times to get off the tracks when a conflict occurs. Theoretically, pedestrians should never need to be warned of a train about to flatten them, but we know the reality is different, and the crosses and flowers attest to it. If we create an area of non-standard warning, we own a portion of the outcome of that action. We shouldn't knowingly increase the statistical probability of death and injury, and the science behind quiet zones shows that that is the reality of the decision. With that, I wish you well. Scott Correa." That's all of the letters, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Moving on to Item B tonight is our Department Updates. And first up is our Parks and Enrichment Services Department, led by Jennifer Berner. So I will ask Jennifer to go ahead with her report.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I am going to share my screen. Give me a moment. Okay, is everybody seeing it okay? Great, okay. So I thought we might need some nice little uplifting photos. Spring is on its way. So on the park side, we are ramping up for what will be a very busy spring for us. So wanted to kind of update you on some projects that we're going to be doing this year. So one of those projects is going to be the Little Mountain Lower Parking Lot restroom. So this is a pit toilet restroom like what we have at the top of Little Mountain. It will be a two-stall restroom is what we're planning on right now. This is going to be a joint project for funding. We've got some funding from the lodging tax grant. We have some money in our CIP, and the Parks Foundation is also going to be helping us out with this particular project. So we'll not only be able to put a restroom in there, but some bike racks and maybe a couple picnic tables around that area. So kind of before and after picture, what you see there is what we have in place right now, and hopefully by the middle of this summer, we'll have a really nice pit toilet restroom there with some picnic tables and such in place. The second project we're going to be tackling this year is 25th Street Playground Installation. So this one, we're hoping that we can get underway by June and finish it up by July or August. All of this is very weather-dependent, and so once the weather gives us the leeway, we will get busy on the 25th Street Playground Installation as well. So those are two exciting projects coming up. Any questions on either one of those? So at one of our staff meetings, what I have challenged staff to do was take a relook at our parks and say, what could we champion this year as well as going forward? What could we do that would either help the appearance of a park, solve a maintenance problem, or maybe address an equity issue? And so kind of taking our usual glasses off and looking at our parks from a very different perspective and really kind of looking at them wholeheartedly of, well, what could we do this year? And then what do we need to look at building into the budget for future years? And what is maybe a CIP project? Staff really got engaged on this. I was really excited about that. They had some great ideas. So some of the things that they came up with, you can see there in the little collage I did there. But one of the things we've already done is we changed out the lighting at the pickleball courts and the tennis courts. If you go to those courts, in the past, you had to put a quarter in to get the lights to come on. Well, that was a maintenance issue, and it was an equity issue. One of the maintenance issues is it would get jammed. People would put stuff in there that wasn't supposed to be in there. They would get filled up on the weekend, and we wouldn't have staff to empty them. So we weren't gaining a lot of revenue with that. We were actually spending more money fixing them and staff time dealing with them than the revenue that we were bringing in. So now you don't need a quarter. So anybody and everybody who wants to come and play tennis, you don't have to, or pickleball, you don't have to put a quarter in to get the lights in the evening. We have them set up on a timer, so they won't come on until, with a photo sensor, so they won't come on until it starts to get dark if somebody pushes the button. So they don't come on automatically. It's if somebody's out there and they want to play, and it's dark enough for the lights to come on, then they would push a button, and the lights would come on, and they're able to use the courts now. So that one, again, it was something fairly simple that we were able to do that solved a couple different problems for us. Some of the other things staff thought about was just some very simple things of, you know, look at what kind of paint we could do. We've got some buildings that could use to repaint job. Looking at the paint colors that we use, making sure that they go together and really mesh well with our parks. We've looked at adding some trash cans or moving some trash cans, some very simple things that just where we see people having issues where they're leaving trash, well, let's get a trash can over by that where we're always seeming to pick up the trash. Doing some different kinds of things with pressure washing, removing some invasive plants, refreshing some of our mulch areas, painting buildings. We talked about that. Oh, one thing that came up was boot cleaners at the trailheads. We have had some requests for that. But you get off the trail, and you don't want to necessarily go get in your car with your boots all muddy. So if you had some just simple little boot cleaners there, it would make some of our trail folks pretty happy. Add some vegetation to some of our planter beds. One thing we thought about too was thinking of an idea of where we could add a community garden and make that available to our community possibly by next year. Fix some of our drainage issues. So these are things that, you know, have maybe been maintenance issues, problems that we just, oh, we'll get to it. Oh, it'll be something that, you know, oh, I thought about it, but nah, I'm not going to really say anything about it. So we are going to, we're challenged to make a lot of these kind of enhancements this year, knowing that we don't have a huge CIP list. We're kind of limited on our budget that way. So let's see how we can enhance our parks and make our parks look better going forward. Any questions on that one? So some exciting changes coming up with Phase Two of the Garden Governor's Guidelines. We are kind of driving towards a March 22 date of Opening Day, as we're going to call it, for our fields. And we are currently working with the school district. We've had a Zoom meeting with them, and we've been working with our local Mount Vernon Conway Youth Baseball and Skagit Little League to figure out how we can get the fields open for youth sports. Our youth sports are able to participate and actually have some games. We are a little behind on our field maintenance coming into the season this year just due to the fact that we were solo-staffed last year. One of the things we had to divest, and we weren't having anybody playing on the fields, was some of our field maintenance that we would normally have done. So we're a little behind the eight ball this year, but we have reached out to some volunteer groups that are going to come and also help us get those fields ready to go, especially the Mount Vernon Conway and South Skagit Little League, those two groups. We've already chatted with them and have got a couple dates scheduled for some Saturdays for them to come out and help out. We're also working with, going to try and reconnect up with our Kiwanis Club. They do some work out at, volunteer work out at the Kiwanis Park. And so we're going to see if maybe they could maybe shift and maybe their next volunteer project be helping us with the weeding out there at the softball field there. So this is pretty exciting. It's going to be nice to see people out there utilizing our fields again. They do have to meet all of the Governor's Guidelines, so I'm working with them on that. Made sure that they had a copy of the Governor's Guidelines that they need to meet, sent that to them in an email so that they can make sure that they're addressing all the issues and then letting us know what their safe play plan is. So we're in the middle of that, but it's rolling along. Any questions? So our last slide here is just kind of a hodgepodge of some things I wanted to bring to your attention. Is one thing we're doing is revising our volunteer program so that we're getting that all up to date. And we really want to have a strong push on getting volunteers out working in our community parks and trails. So we're looking at, we'll have like a park stewardship part of our program, city work projects, work parties, school stewardship programs, and then community-led work parties such as businesses or groups that want to come out and volunteer. So those are kind of our four areas that we're going to be focusing on. Some exciting things for us on the staffing update. Tara Small, our office assistant, she was able to start back with us on February 1st. We are all really excited to have her come back in the office. Our seven-month seasonal started February 1st, and we have a facilities foreman, that's a new facilities foreman, that's going to be starting March 1st. We are in the process of hiring our second seven-month seasonal, and we are preparing our paperwork to start the recruiting process for our five three-month seasonals on the park side. So we're ramping up, trying to get our staff lined up to help us tackle, I think, what will be a fairly busy summer for us. The picnic shelter use, we're hoping we can open the picnic shelters around April. We need to get in there and do some assessment. They've been closed up for a long time, so we need to do a safety assessment on those and then kind of get them up to speed. But that's kind of a goal that we're driving for right now. We're going to have to redo some of our policies a little bit. So that gives us some time to get that in line before we go live with doing some openings for the picnic shelters. Arts Commission, they have ordered plaques for the different artwork that have not had plaques in the past. They are working on a new art map design. Since we have these new artworks, trying to get a new map with all of those new beautiful art pieces in there. And then we're in the process of kind of doing an information gathering of information about each art piece, the maintenance that's required for them, the artist, contact information, all of that. So we kind of have a Bible on all of our artwork in one location. And last but not least, our recreation programming and events. We're hoping to, we're working together with the library to do a story walk program hopefully this summer. We're going to be doing a drive, we're looking at doing a drive-in movie series with The Chamber. We are working on the details of that. And our Fourth of July event, we're working on some different places and locations, just depending on where we're at, how we can make that event happen. We're looking at maybe trying to do some summer specialty camps that we contract out so that way they are doing all of the COVID guidelines, and we're working through them. And then one of our focuses going forward is going to be outdoor and nature programs, since we know this is something that people feel most comfortable doing, and we want to make sure that we are bringing some type of programs to our community and think this might be a good focus for us for summer and then also leading into fall and possibly winter. We'll be kind of focusing, since our recordinator won't come on until April, our big focus will be trying to do a larger bank of programming for fall and winter and just a smaller bank for summer, but getting something out there. So I know that's a lot in a short period of time, but just wanted to bring you up to date with all the things that we're working on. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me, or I'm available, you know, by phone or email.
All right. Thanks, Jennifer, for all the updates. I know it's been quite busy for Jennifer, meeting with, especially with all the sports clubs and making sure the communication is good with them. So appreciated. All right. Moving on to our Finance Department update. Doug Pulaski, our Finance Director is here. Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure, let's see, if I, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, I think we can.
All right, okay. So we talked just real briefly last week about our purchasing, approval levels and stuff with our purchasing policy and stuff. So I did some more research this past week and looked at some of the different cities and things that are going on. And we have, what I want to do is actually rewrite the city, rewrite the city's policy for purchasing and procurement. So the part of it, though, that we need to look at to get some direction from, from council, is on the, excuse me, let me get, move here, is on the approval levels. And so first of all, what I'm going to go over to you is what we have currently and what we'd like to propose it to. So just like it says here, these approval levels are designed for the contracts whose costs are covered by budget appropriations previously approved by the city council. So just like it is now, everything is, if you haven't approved it during the budget time and know about it, then we do have to bring it forward to councils. So that's not going to change there. That's going to be the same. So with that, first of all, our purchasing for equipment, supplies, and materials. Currently, we have, if it's 7,500, excuse me, or less, the director, the department head approves any kinds of like supplies and materials so the mayor doesn't have to worry about approving when we order pencils and stuff like that. And then from 7,501 to 25,000, the mayor's approval, and anything over the 25,000 gets to council. What we would like to do is propose is change that to the mayor's approval up to $50,000 and then council approval from 50 or more. Just to point out, we haven't updated our policy since like 2004, and looking at what all the other cities and stuff goes, this is really in line with what's out there right now. And then moving forward for professional services, this is personal services like architectural and engineering, accounting, et cetera. Currently, the mayor has a 10,000 or less approval, and council's anything over 10. We would like to change that to, again, that $50,000 limit on that. For anything above that would be for council. And then the same thing also for non-professional services, for purchase services. Again, that's just $10,000, and we would like to change that to $50,000. And then lastly, our Public Works Projects. Again, this is pretty much in line with a lot of the cities have too right now. Our current policy, we were just going to leave this the same. The mayor has approval up to $300,000 or less, and council's anything over $300,000. And we're just proposing just to leave that one the same and make no changes there. So that is, like I said, I'm going to be writing a whole new policy for the city. So and I need to get a lot of directors involved and stuff like that. This is just kind of the first thing that I wanted to, just to bring forward for guys to look at and see if there's any issues or if we have to have discussions on these approval levels.
Any questions for Doug? Again, this is just part of, part of a new purchasing type of a policy, so.
I know that I sat down with Doug this week, and we went over this because I had asked to be included in this discussion. And I think that if we, as a council, have already approved the amount in the budget, it's part of the budget process, we should be comfortable with the levels that are, the new levels that are proposed because we've already, it's already established that this money is to be spent for these items. And I believe that the executive should have that approval power.
Doug, can we back up just a couple screens?
Sure.
So what was the first screen?
That one?
Yeah. So that one, I'm, I don't have any real heartburn over that one. I think the professional services was, is that the next one?
Yes.
For me, I'd like to see that be, and this is just me, 25, anything above 25,000 be ran through council. I think it's a good idea for council to just take a look at these, the agreements that we've got coming forward, see who they're with and what we're doing with them. This is my own personal opinion. Go ahead. You can go to the next one.
Okay. It's also professional ser-
Yeah, and it would be the same on that for me. That's kind of where my comfort level is. I think it's a good idea, again, it's a good idea for us to take a look at who we're contracting with for services. That doesn't change, so we're good there.
All right.
Any other feedback?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just chime in and say that, you know, initially, I wasn't necessarily on board with changing the limits only because, yes, we do go through the budget process, but I think it's good for our community to see what it is that their taxpayer dollars are going towards, and it's just a good reminder. But taking a look at these and seeing what other like-sized cities are doing, I can live. I agree with Councilmember Hudson and think that this looks good.
Hey, Doug. I asked last week concerning just percentages, do we have any of those yet? As far as how many are under 25 and how many are maybe over or?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Molinar. I never, I forgot to look into that. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. I was just-
I can send some time and get that broken out for you and send that to you.
It doesn't have to. I, just a round guesstimate, I mean, you don't have to get too much time on it. But I just wondered if majority of them are over 50 or if they're under 50 or is it, I mean, 25? Because we had talked about 25,000 too.
Yeah, I'll have to get that broken out. I couldn't even take a guess at that right now. I would imagine there's a lot of, we have a lot of small contracts that do come through. But the majority of them, you know, it's everything that you guys have been seeing anyway, so.
Doug, I can't remember you did, you were able to pull up, you know, kind of a guesstimate of the number of contracts we sign every year. And I want to say, wasn't it around three hundred?
Yeah, it was two hundred and, about two hundred and forty contracts, but, but our system doesn't break it down by the, you know, the cost of them. And so I have to go through each one and look at what they were. So I, I didn't do that and I apologize. I totally spaced that out.
The, the directors will help you from each individual department, Doug. So they're, they should be able to let you know from their departments what their contracts are, so.
All right.
We'll get, we'll get that for you, Gary.
Absolutely.
Can we go back to the first slide too?
Sure. This one or?
No, I'm sorry, the next one.
Okay.
I, I guess a similar question. I'm, I'm wondering how many pieces of, you know, supplies, materials we buy that are over twenty-five thousand.
You know, and another thing too, I, I need to add is now remember, these are just approval levels. We still have to follow, you know, purchasing requirements, state requirements as far as bids and et cetera and stuff like that and filling out some of those forms. You know, when there's anything, you know, when I send you, when we purchase like equipment or mainly a small, you know, smaller equipment or anything like that, I always send you just an FYI. In the, you know, an email to you guys stating that this has been, you know, the, bid and then here, here's the amount. And that's usually for anything, you know, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, you see all of those and that, that process as far as bidding and getting that information out, it would still follow.
Well, hey, my, my two cents is that, you know, I, I had suggested that we, you know, move more things into the consent agenda. So that we weren't sort of micromanaging stuff that we've already approved in a budget. But that a consent agenda allows us to see, not.
I think we lost Richard there getting frozen. Maybe if I, I will try stopping his video just to see if that may help, but that might not even work yet. So. Okay. Any other questions? We might need to move along and come back if needed. Again, it's kind of for information, just starting to walk through the purchasing policies. Juan, did you?
Counsel?
Go, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Bedrow, given that we're just at the information stage, I would say if, if Mr. Valeski, we can possibly have, you know, a pros and cons of the current state and versus the proposed. If we're able to see something like that, I think that would be very helpful to all of us.
Sure. That's something we can, we can look at. I think looking at numbers and stuff like that too will be, will also provide a lot of information, you know, those percentages as Councilman Molinar asks. So yeah, I can work on something like that for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. If there aren't any questions on this, maybe we'll move along and see if Councilmember Brockswith is able to rejoin. So.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Oh, there we go. There we go. Yep.
I'm so sorry. I don't know where I dropped out.
That's okay. Kind of, ki, you were talking about consent agenda, I think.
Yeah, I think I was just wanting to make a note that, you know, I thought the consent agenda process could be improved to where we weren't micromanaging the procurement. But we're still seeing the information reported in a consent agenda. Good for the public, good for the council. This kind of goes pretty far the other way where if at such high limits without seeing any of the information, I know we might get emails on some of the procurement afterwards. So it, it seems like it kind of goes pretty far that direction. So I still like the consent agenda approach where we're not, you know, micromanaging it, but we're still getting the information. But I'm going to be flexible and follow, follow the council's lead on this. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, if there isn't any more comments, we'll go ahead and move along. And Doug, is there anything else from you?
No, that's it.
Okay. Because that we, this is our kind of committee time at, as we move through COVID and virtual meetings. I have our human resources director, Ann Kader here, and she's going to talk a little bit about collective bargaining with council as she is actively working in negotiations right now with our union group. So Erin.
Hello, good evening. Let me see. Are you able to see my screen? Yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay. So as the mayor said, she asked me to provide an overview or training on collective bargaining as it pertains to contract negotiations. So I'm hoping to keep this short, but if you have any questions or comments, feel free to let me know. So I'm going to start at the very beginning. Back in nineteen sixty-seven, RCW forty-one fifty-six was established and that gives public employers the right to join labor organizations. Okay? It does, it also says that public employers are not allowed to interfere with activities of labor organizations or to discriminate against employees for wishing to exercise the right to join unions. Within that RCW, there is no right to strike granted to any public employer. Okay, so. We have in the city, we've got five bargaining units. We've got two within fire, two within police, and then we've got our Teamsters Union. As you can see from, oh, I'm sorry. I haven't switched slides. I apologize. As you can see, four of our contracts are open this year. So I am actively negotiating the battalion chief contract, the Teamsters contract, and we just had our first meeting today with the firefighters. And so for council members who've been on council for a few years, you might remember that typically firefighters and the battalion chiefs like to negotiate their contracts together. But this year, the battalion chiefs have decided that they wanted to separate from the firefighters and negotiate their contracts separately. So we are well underway with the battalion chiefs and just starting with the firefighters. I thought I'd go through some of the definitions so that when we're in executive session, maybe later in the year, you would understand what I'm talking about. A public employee is any employee of a public employer with the exception of elected officials or those appointed to office. Confidential employees and a confidential employee is actually a very limited number of employees. Those are employees that participate in collective bargaining or have a nexus to confidential information about current or future bargaining. This does not involve individuals who might be administrative assistants to a director who have privy to confidential information. It has to have a clear nexus to the labor relations negotiation process. Court commissioners and magistrates are also excluded as well as personal assistants to the court judge. All right. Collective bargaining is the performance of two parties, the employer and the employee representatives getting together to negotiate in good faith and try to execute a written agreement regarding wages, hours and working conditions. Okay, we cannot be compelled to come to agreement, but we have to work towards that. Any questions on that? All right. The Public Employment Relations Commission is the Washington State Agency that oversees collective bargaining in the public sector. This is similar to the National Labor Relations Board for private sector employees. They have jurisdiction over collective bargaining. They also settle disputes regarding unfair labor practices, grievances, et cetera. Tentative agreements, when we're in the middle of negotiations, we might come to agreement on contract language. And so we will tentatively agree to that language, take it off the table so we can move on and focus on other articles that we still need to work on. You've probably heard somebody talk about mandatory subjects of bargaining. These we have to discuss, we have to bargain in good faith over these and these subjects directly impact wages, hours and working conditions. So salaries, incentive plans, health insurance, grievance procedures, et cetera. Again, we don't have to come to agreement, but we do have to negotiate in good faith regarding those items. Mediation. Mediation is when during collective bargaining, we cannot come to agreement. And so we can ask a third party mediator to assist in mediating that agreement. They cannot, the mediator cannot compel agreement. They cannot change contract language. But they just facilitate that dialogue between the two parties. And typically we get our mediators from PERC. Interest arbitration, this is the fun one. Interest arbitration is available to firefighters and law enforcement officers. And interest arbitration kicks in after media, mediation fails. Unlike mediation during interest arbitration, the outside arbitrator has the power to impose contract language and to impose terms on the parties. And these terms are binding. There's no appeal process to this. So once the arbitrator makes the decision, that is what is implemented. Council's role. So the council's role in contract negotiations is to establish parameters for the negotiation team. You know, based on compensation, maybe you want changes in healthcare, et cetera. But that is what your role is, is to provide those parameters and that policy direction of where you want to go. You also approve the final collective bargaining agreement after we've come to agreement. And your biggest role is to avoid end runs by the union membership. And so this is very important. Because oftentimes, union employees will go to council members to, you know, just talk. And sometimes negotiations come up and if a council member demonstrates that they are in agreement, it makes it difficult for the negotiations team to continue. Because if we are saying no and, but they heard a yes from a council member, then they're going to continue to push for those things. So it's really important that if a union member approaches you, that you just refer them back to the negotiations table. You can say you understand what they're talking about, just don't agree with them and point them back to negotiations. All right. There's good faith and there's bad faith bargaining. And so again, good faith bargaining is when we go into negotiations with an open mind, hoping to come to an agreement. Bad faith bargaining is when we do regressive bargaining and that might be, we put three percent on the table as a cost of living adjustment and then we take a step back and we go, nope, we've decided it's just going to be one percent. That is regressive bargaining and that is bad faith. Making an initial take it or leave it proposal. So here's our best proposal. It's our first meeting, take it or leave it. Again, doesn't fly with PERC. Not providing information to the union that they need for negotiations. So oftentimes when we're starting negotiations, I'll get requests for leave balances for the union membership. They'll also ask for what the other unions might have or contracts. So being able to provide those timely is important. And then we can't condition bargaining on the surrender of grievances or unfair labor practices. So if outside of contract negotiations, the union has filed a grievance or a ULP, we can't say, okay, give those up and then we'll go ahead and agree to this contract language. That's, that's bad faith bargaining. Okay. So getting into the meat of the actual process. This is where, this is the most time consuming for me. So before we begin any negotiations, I gather contracts from all of our comparable jurisdictions. And when I say comparable, I'm looking at jurisdictions that fall within fifty to one hundred and fifty percent of our assessed valuation and our population. That's pretty standard and traditional. We can use other things such as sales tax, size of department, call volume, et cetera. But we typically just focus on that sales tax and, or I'm sorry, the assessed valuation and population. So I gather all of those collective bargaining agreements, the salaries, the benefit schedules, costs, everything. I read through them all and then I prepare a spreadsheet to create a total comp model. So that I can see, you know, on an hourly basis, what the total comp for other jurisdictions is for their firefighters or their Teamsters or police officers. And then I plunk the city of Mount Vernon into that and I can see where we're falling in terms of the mean or median. And then finance is a key part to this because I will then, after getting, after getting your input, will ask finance to help me cost out what increasing components of the contract are so that I know what the cost will be. I also select a panel to negotiate. That's really important for me because for me to bargain, for instance, the Teamsters contract, it doesn't make sense for me to do that in a vacuum. Because obviously the managers have, have a need to know what's in the contract and say, because it impacts how they run their, their divisions. We also have to identify a lead negotiator, internal or external. With the firefighter union, we have gone with an external lead negotiator this year because last year was so contentious. And we understand that there's some bigger elements that they're going to be bringing forward this year. Because they have that binding arbitration that they can go to, it's best to have legal onboard early. So that hopefully we can stay away from arbitration at the end. Another part of the preparation process is just going through with management and reviewing the collective bargaining agreement for areas of concern. Or identifying things that might have popped up with them over the year with their employees. So we know what we're going to address. And we also want to look at it from the union's perspective. What are they going to be asking for? And then we prepare proposals and I present information during exec session to the city council so that we can get some guidance and policy direction there. And then once that's done, we schedule our meetings. And the first meeting is typically, we agree to ground rules. And we cover how we're going to caucus. How are we going to handle tentative agreements? When do our proposals need to be presented? And a negotiation session is much like a football game, in my opinion. You have a very short play of passing proposals and then you go and you caucus for a while. And then you come back to the table and you switch your proposals again, and then you leave and you caucus and you go on like that. And that goes on for hours during the day. And that's how all those meetings go. We keep agreeing on articles, crossing them off as TAs and moving on to the next thing. So if both parties are able to come to agreement on the contract, then city staff presents the information to city council. Requesting that council, the mayor to sign the contract, the union goes to their membership and they ask their membership to vote and ratify the contract. If both parties are unable to come to agreement, then either the union or the city can request mediation. And again, mediation is just allows for a third party mediator to kind of guide that dialogue between the two parties in the hopes of coming to agreement, but they cannot compel agreements. If we try mediation and impasse continues, what happens next depends on the union. If the union membership is comprised of general employees, not police officers or firefighters, then the union is not afforded the ability to go to interest arbitration. Employers have the right to negotiate or, and this is a big or, the employer is able to unilaterally implement their last and final. Or, and this is a big or, the employer is able to unilaterally implement their last and final proposal if at least one year has passed following the end date of the last collective bargaining agreement. This doesn't eliminate our duty to bargain. So if the union changes position, we still have to go to the table and negotiate with them. Unilateral implementation is not a recommended approach. I'll just tell you that, it's an option, but it's not a good option. It really makes things contentious and it doesn't alleviate our need to negotiate. So it's, it's really not a good idea. Any questions on that one? Impasse after mediation with police officers and firefighters. This one, again, our police officers and our firefighters have the ability to go to interest arbitration. So during mediation, the mediator will certify any articles that were not agreed to and she'll certify that to arbitrate, he, she will certify that to arbitration. And at arbitration, there is a third party arbitrator who will hear our cases. He, she will look at our comparables. And again, we may not have agreed on comparables during our negotiation sessions. So the union might have a different set than the city has, obviously. Typically, comparables reflect what we're searching for in terms of the compensation outlook. There's a statutory obligation to pay at market level, but market is determined by the arbitrator. And so again, they're going to review those comps and to see where we would fall within there. We don't always have to pay at the average. If we're historically been low, then the arbitrator will take that into account. We don't always move up to the top, to the middle. They'll look at where we've been in the past. And again, the arbitrator's decision is binding on both parties. That arbitrator can write contract language that will go into the contract. They can decide on our comparables for us for future. So it's very important for us to try to avoid arbitration if we can. If there's things that we can truly work on, it's better to do it that way than to leave it up to an arbitrator to make that decision for us. All right, following negotiations. If we decided, we've got TAs, we've decided on contract language. Or if we went to arbitration and there's a decision, then we create a contract from that. And the union reviews it, we review it, management reviews it. It is then taken to council for approval to have the mayor sign. Training is provided to management and payroll on any revised contract language. And also, it's imperative during our negotiation sessions that both sides keep good notes. Because if some of the language ends up being ambiguous, we thought it was clear, but in looking at it after the fact, it's not quite as clear. The notes can actually back up the intent of the language so that we can say, this is what that language means, even if it's not clear. And that's all I had, any questions on any of that? I'm sorry if that was long, but it was very.
It was interesting, Erin, I, I really appreciate it, honestly. But I did have one question. I don't remember if you said this or not, but the arbitrator, is that someone that is agreed upon by both parties? Or how does that, how does that selection process for an arbitrator work? When, if you get to that point?
We can try to come to agreement, but PERC ultimately will pick it if we can't.
Great, thank you, that was the one question I had.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Erin, I'm, I'm glad, I, I wanted to just have you run through that process. I knew that sometimes when council members come on, if they're not able to attend A W C trainings or things like that, that there, these are really important overviews, so appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, on our agenda, item C is our council member comments. Any council member comments tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I have a comment. We've heard, some of us on council have heard some concerns from the community about the lack of mask wearing in our parks. And I just wanted to remind everyone that we are in the middle of winter. The COVID numbers are up this week from last week. And so I just wanted us all to do our part to think of one another and continue wearing those masks so we can get through this.
Great, thank you. Any other council member comments? All right, moving on, item D tonight, mayor's report. I had asked Director Chris Phillips to, to share some needs with you that are fairly urgent. However, I'd like to get to our agenda, so I'm gonna maybe put that under for the good of the order at the end. Just so we can get our guests going on our agenda. So item E then, moving on, is our council and committee agenda requests. Are any of those agenda requests from council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into our agenda under new business. Item A is our open record public hearing regarding C D B G 2021 to 2022 action plan. Peter Donovan is, administrates this, so I'm gonna turn it over to him, Peter.
Thanks, Mayor, hi, council. The open record public hearing that we're holding tonight, it, it's an invitation for Mount Vernon residents, as well as human service providers within the city, to let the city know about needs that relate to the city's C D B G program. Now, C D B G stands for Community Development Block Grant. This is a federal program that's overseen by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the program provides funding each year to entitlement cities like Mount Vernon. The amount of funding that a, that a city receives is based on a formula that HUD provides. And just to give you an idea about how much money that we're talking about here for Mount Vernon. Last year, the city of Mount Vernon was allocated about $380,000. In 2019, the amount was $390,000. In 2018, it was $400,000. And it was $338,000 in 2017. So it fluctuates each year and we've yet to receive our 2021 allocation amount from HUD. But given that history, we can guess that it might be a similar amount. So with each of these annual allocations, the city is required to put together an annual action plan that explains how we intend to pass these federal dollars through the city and onto the agencies that are doing the hard work of addressing housing and non-housing community development needs in Mount Vernon. And that's why we're here tonight. Tonight, we have representatives from a few of our local nonprofit agencies who are going to let us know about what their agencies are doing right now to address needs and to demonstrate how the city's C D B G dollars could further assist them in that process. So we are, we're gonna do it alphabetically tonight. First, from Community Action, I would like to welcome Melissa Self. Melissa, thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks for having me. Melissa Self, Deputy Director, Community Action, Skagit County. I reside in Mount Vernon, Washington. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak on behalf of Community Action of Skagit County to apply for 2021, 2022 Community Development Block Grant funding. Funding received will be support the services we provide through our Resource Center, which is our front door to the agency services, including those looking for resources related to homelessness. As I'm sure with everyone, this past year has been one of our most challenging, given the adjustments needed to navigate staff and client safety during the pandemic. We'd like to thank you for reaching out with the C D B G COVID funding that allowed us to assist Mount Vernon residents with eviction prevention assistance and for the flexibility to continue to house vulnerable seniors in motels during this time. The partnership with Officer Serrano and the, the eviction prevention program was so helpful to reach the families in Mount Vernon who had fallen behind on rent. And we hope to continue that partnership as we work to assist families to remain in their homes. Despite having closed our main reception area, we continue to serve the public with critical needs such as rent assistance, motel vouchers, food and basic hygiene needs and more. Our outreach staff are delivering items to the unhoused daily. Our energy assistance team is busier than ever. And we've staffed up for the next round of federal eviction prevention funds that will begin to become available on March 8th. That is to say, our main point of entry to these services have been overwhelmed with calls. And we just, this week, onboarded a new service screener to assist with, with the call volume. In 2020, we served 400, 4,807 participants that reported an address in Mount Vernon, which translates to about 41% of the people that we served. In addition to those people, we directly served our food distribution center, provided 80,000 to 100,000 pounds of food to approximately 200, 2,000 households in Mount Vernon each month. So like I said, we're getting ready to ramp up for the next flood of eviction prevention funds. And we, that, that front door is, is just so important to the work that we do. We're thankful for the city of Mount Vernon and to all our community partners, many of whom are here tonight, as we continue to serve the most vulnerable in our community. Thank you.
And we're thankful to you and the staff of Community Action, Melissa. Thank you for being here tonight and for sharing those needs with us. Next, from Skagit Habitat for Humanity, I would like to thank, I would like to welcome and thank for being here, Executive Director Teresa Pugh and Resource Development Coordinator TJ Larick. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you, yes, I'm Teresa Pugh and I'm the Executive Director of Skagit Habitat for Humanity. We really thank the partnership with the city and are excited to continue our partnership. But we're excited that with the new year coming on, we've got a lot going on. And I'm gonna have TJ Larick, who's our Resource Development, kind of give you an update. But we feel that our program is a proven program and a model for affordable, permanent affordable housing. And we're finishing up our 38th and 39th home as we speak. Waiting for the permits on the 40th, they should actually be arriving next week. And TJ, if you'd like to address everyone, we appreciate you listening.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. So we would like the city council to consider funding Skagit Habitat with C D B G funding for down payment assistance for the homes we're building in Mount Vernon. This will assist us in addressing the long-term solution for affordable homeownership according to the city's strategic plan and HUD's objective. Skagit Habitat's mission aligns well with C D B G funding and HUD's national objective to eliminate and aid in prevention and to benefit low-income families. This also allows, aligns well with the city's consolidated 2018 and 2020 plan for the community with affordable homeownership. According to C D B G objectives, we can assist in addressing the areas of family living in unsuitable or unsafe homes and uncontrollable problems with renting. So we address creative, suitable living environments. We also take families out of transitional rental cycles at a time that affordable homes are at an all-time low and invest inventories are down 40% right now. Homeownership is proven to provide stability for adults, children, and communities. And we at Skagit Habitat have a long history of building well-constructed, safe homes that improve family health, children's school results, while addressing the ever-increasing issue for our social service issues. With affordable mortgages guaranteed at 30% of family income, homeowners become financially stable and can afford and pay for other necessities while being a larger contributor to our community. Statistically, children of homeowners and parents with financial stability are more likely to graduate from college and go on to higher education. Now HUD and their national objectives have been focused on low-income families. And our mission has always been to assist with permanent homeownership. That is in the 30 to 60% AMI for our county. We have a proven model and a record of being cost-effective, value-added results model that's never had to foreclose on any Habitat home, even during a downturn in the economy. With the usage of the city's C D B G funds, we can build this year and we can help with the city's priorities one, which is for homelessness. Priority two, with affordable housing supply. Priority four, with maintaining the stock of housing resources. And priority five, of reducing the impact of poverty. This also fits with HUD's strategic plan and our mission. Permanent homes give families hope, stability, and the dream of possibilities. And this is the opportunity for Mount Vernon to create a change. We're asking for your commitment to our community and yours for a long-term, stable future. And I appreciate the time. And if anyone has any questions, I appreciate that you asked Teresa or myself.
All right, a, a, any questions right now for Teresa and TJ? All right, Teresa, TJ, any final comments from you? Thank you very much for taking the time to, to be with us this evening. And, and thanks for all the work that Habitat is, is doing in the city of Mount Vernon. Next, we're going to hear from Helping Hands Food Bank. And I would like to welcome, welcome back Executive Director Rebecca Larson. It was here last, I believe it was last summer, wasn't it Rebecca, that you were here to talk with council a little bit about what Helping Hands Food Bank is doing?
Thank you for having us and I want to say thank you for your support for 2020 during COVID. We're currently working, obviously, very hard in Mount Vernon. We have about 5,800 families that we're supporting through our different food distributions. We also are serving about 370 kids every week through our backpack program. Mount Vernon is about 33% of our families. And that, that number's probably higher because currently, right now, we are not keeping track of every person that comes based on barriers. We want to limit every barrier so people can get fed. Our main focus for 2021 is going to be breaking the cycle of this crisis in poverty. And we're looking to use CBD money to help. We have a house on our property that we're moving into a job training center and a program center. So we currently have four interns and we are signing up another seven interns that will be, being paid, they're laid-off workers. And it'll bring about a quarter of a million dollars into Skagit County for its state, state and federal funding to put people back to work. And our goal is to upscale and re-skill folks to go back to work. We have businesses that we're partnering with so that there is a follow-through. And it's not just the skills, but then finding that meaning in employment that they're looking for. Apologize, I'm nervous. And we just want to say thank you for allowing us to talk tonight. And again, think about the food banks and how we're not just food banks. We're also helping those in crisis and moving them forward into a meaningful, thriving life.
All right, thank you Rebecca for being here. As this is an open record public hearing, the public have not able to attend, of course. They've, we've asked the public to send in comments, email comments on any of these particular needs. And we have a couple that I will read that are in support of Helping Hands Food Bank. The first is from Rick Bailey. Rick writes, I am writing to support the C D B G funding plan for 2021. I would like to recommend funding be provided for emergency food through local food banks. As a member of the Washington National Guard, activated to support Skagit County during the pandemic, I am directly involved in providing emergency food assistance to Mount Vernon residents through a distribution site at Mount Vernon High School, as well as providing home delivery to children, healthcare workers, and shut-ins. The need is still great and these distributions are still ongoing. Thank you for your consideration, this request, considering this request during your planning process. Eric Bailey, Master Sergeant. And the next one is from Miranda Wilson. Hello, my name is Miranda, I am the Programs Manager at Helping Hands. I would like to take a moment to share some information with you regarding the services we provide to the members of your community. When I started working with Helping Hands Food, Helping Hands about five years ago, we were a small food pantry with one location that was open one day a week. Today, we are much more than a food pantry and have several food distribution sites across Skagit County. In addition to adding new locations, we also provide services beyond our food distribution. Our chow program is open to all Skagit County children. After getting several requests from school counselors, doctors, parents, and other agencies, we have expanded and are now delivering over 2,000 bags of food to children experiencing food insecurity across Skagit County. This program has seen a huge increase of need due to children not being in school. This program serves children ages three to 18 years of age. We have food pantries inside of several schools that children We have food pantries inside of several schools that children can access at meal times, as well as take food from, to use at home. Helping Hands Mobile Food Programs has expanded to delivering to over 500 homes a week, as well as delivering to senior living centers and childcare centers. Several months ago, I contacted the Skagit County Health Department. After talking to them about the needs of those who tested positive for COVID and those in quarantine, I developed a program that allowed Helping Hands to deliver food to their homes. This partnership has allowed those who are unable to leave their home to continue to get their needs met without continuing to risk the health of our community. We have a job training program that is open to community members who want to grow their resume and gain new skills. We also work with WorkSource, AmeriCorps, and DSHS to provide their participants job training. I was trained by DSHS to be able to assist those in need of completing their applications and connect them with other services they provide. I am an elected representative of the Washington Connection Advisory Committee. That gives me an opportunity to represent the people in our area's needs. As DSHS offices were unable to meet with people in person due to COVID, I was able to continue assisting people to get the benefits they were in need of. After seeing the need in Skagit County continue to grow for not only food, but other services, we have developed a program to connect those in need with the services to help them. I have a large number of people experiencing homelessness, inability to pay utility bills, transportation issues, drug addiction, lack of childcare, unemployment, domestic violence, and many other issues our community members are facing. Asking for help with any of these needs is hard. It takes a lot of courage to ask for help. Having relationships with other agencies is very important to us. For example, I work closely with schools, counseling agencies, housing programs, courts, migrant programs, DSHS, and other groups to help provide their participants with services they do not provide. Working closely with these agencies allows us to reach more of those in need. Due to COVID, many businesses and agencies have had to close or, or work at a lesser capacity. This has made our participants' need for assistance grow. There are many programs that can assist those impacted by COVID. As funding for those programs lessen and the needs continue to grow, I know Helping Hands will remain resilient and grow with the needs of our community. Helping Hands is able to do all of this and more due to the support we receive from community and grants. We were able to provide food and services to over 710,000 individuals in 2020. This would not have been possible without the care and generosity of our community. If you have any further questions or would like to hear how we have helped the individuals in your community, please feel free to contact me. Thank you for your time. Miranda Williams, Programs Manager, Helping Hands Food Bank. And the last email that I received on this topic was, it was from you Rebecca, and it looked like a lot of what's in there you covered in your talk, but I could read this if you'd like. Okay. Well, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our final guest tonight for the CDBG Open Record Public Hearing is Jody Dean from Home Trust of Skagit. Welcome, Jody.
Thank you, Peter, and good evening Mayor and City Council. My name is Jody Dean. I am the Executive Director of Home Trust of Skagit. We are a very small nonprofit, a community development organization. We're located in downtown Mount Vernon. I want to share just two quick comments with you and then leave you with a proposal that I'd like you to think about and consider. It's something that just popped up about a month ago and I shared the details in depth with Peter and then of course, your CDBG consultant is what I call him, the guru, Paul Schisler. But anyway, first of all, I'd like to thank you for providing down payment assistance to homebuyers in Mount Vernon. We've got a home that you funded in the Highlands, a large family home, one across and just down the way from the grocery store, that's Hagan's Grocery Store up there. We have a home very close to downtown Mount Vernon you funded a down payment for. And then of course, I call it a signature neighborhood and a great partnership with Habitat for Humanity, 11 homes, Summerlin. Many of you have seen that, you've been there. I like to brag about it. You funded four down payments there. Great success. And on behalf of the Board of Directors that I work for, I'd like to thank you for doing that. Mary, your City Councilwoman, she's one of my board members that I work for, one of my bosses. So anyway, we'd like to thank you. The second comment I'd like to make is I know you're planning for the future and Home Trust is in the permanent affordable housing game, period. That's what we do and we do it well, just like Habitat and other organizations. But this year, we're not going to ask, we're going to pause. We're going to pause because, as everybody knows, and I won't go into the details, because some of what I would consider my colleagues in the business, they've explained what's happened to the housing market. And we are unable to, you know, find a house where a, a family, a working family in your city, mom and dad both work or whatever the configuration is, we can't, they can get mortgaged, but they only can get mortgage for under 200,000. And we're looking at houses that are 400,000 and 500,000 and we can't stack enough down payments together to make it work. We got really close here about, it was in November and it totally fell through. And I want you to know, when our phone rings or I get emails or, or people are approaching us, they want to live in the city of Mount Vernon. Not that there's anything against the other locations, but that seems to be the number one thing said on the telephone. It's because I asked, you know, where would you like to live in the city of Mount Vernon? So we have $100,000 that you have graciously given or granted through your program to our organization and we keep rolling it over. I know that letter's coming and then I've got to fill out the forms and I put down, it's honest, it's transparent, that we want to hang on to the money and we want to help a family, but we are unable to do that. So the $100,000 is sitting with you and we'd like to pause asking for more, but don't forget about us because we're still in the game. The market will change. It always does. But what I'd like to present to you just quickly here in two minutes is the Friendship House. As many of you know, they are in the process of securing another Barbara's house that would house six individuals. And I was simply on a Zoom call with Schwib, a group, Skagit Women in Business, and I was listening to their director, the director of the Friendship House, Tina Tate, explain the process. And it was just, I mean, it was a divine moment. And I thought, you know what? That $100,000 that Home Trust has been hanging on to, to help a couple families in the city is not going to happen in the, in the, in the near future. And is there any way that my Board of Directors would vote to redirect those funds with you? And so our proposal to you tonight is the $100,000 that we have for down payment assistance with you, we would, we were asking to have it redirected through all the proper channels, which your staff knows how to do all of that. And we would like that $100,000 to be redirected to pay for, help pay for the Barbara's house, another one that the Friendship House is working on right now. So that's what I leave you with, a thank you for helping us. We're not going to ask for funding this go-around, but don't forget about us because we're in the business. We're, we're, we're starting to pull permits for building five houses in La Conner. That's where our focus is right now and we'll be back to ask for money in the future. And then lastly, please consider redirecting those funds to help Tina Tate, the Friendship House and that Board of Directors purchase a home that will house those who are homeless right now. So anyway, one last thing, look over my shoulder, right there. That's what we do. We do it morning and night, rain or shine. We help families, especially families with children, purchase their, their first home. So I thank you and I hope you consider my Board of Directors' ask of redirecting that $100,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. It's been truly inspiring work that Home Trust of Skagit does and an inspiring offer as well. I think this is something that, that may work out for Friendship House. And you know, the Friendship House land acquisition for a Barbara's house was an idea that, that came at the mayor's direction about, I don't know, three years ago, to start maybe saving some money and setting aside some CDBG money each year. And Friendship House now appears to be in a position where they may be able to purchase some property. The couple hundred thousand that the city has available for them is, is a start. It was a good start. They would have to likely do some renovations as well and another hundred thousand would go a long way. So council, that would look like a amendment to your action plan, to a past action plan. And, and it's not a, it's not a huge thing to do. It's something that we can do in, in a meeting coming up, probably in March or April. Any questions about that? All right, Mayor, that is all that I have for the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you to all of our guests that came tonight. We appreciate your time and your patience in getting through our agenda. All the work that you all do is valuable, so we really appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. All right, Peter, the next in, the next thing up in our series of CDBG is a discussion of our adoption of our plan, correct?
That's right. So we'll take these requests now and we'll, we'll regroup. We'll meet with our consultants. We'll consider all of these requests. Once we find out what the amount is that HUD allocates to Mount Vernon, we'll be able to put some numbers next to those needs. We would draft an action plan for the 2021, 2022 CDBG year. And then we would come back, we would post that publicly and we would hold another hearing so the public has an opportunity to comment on that plan in April. And once that passes the public hearing and council approval, then we would submit that to HUD in May.
Okay. Any questions from council on the next steps? Okay, great. Then we'll move on with our agenda items. And guests, feel free to, feel free to drop off unless you're really, really interested in, in the rest of our agenda items tonight. So thank you. All right, item B tonight is an appointment of a new library board member. So we have Isaac Huffman, our library director, is somewhere on my screen. So Isaac.
Hello. As you know, the library has a five-member board that is the governing structure for making all advisory decisions for the library and does some administrative function as well. Due to a normal lifecycle vacancy, we currently have an opening on the library board and the library board has recommended the selection of Joan Gordon as the new library candidate. Joan is a resident of Mount Vernon, meets all the eligibility requirements, has gone through an interview with the mayor and attended a library board meeting. She works for Community Health Plans of Washington and brings a unique background to the library board. So we're asking that the council approve Joan Gordon to the library board.
All right. Any questions for Isaac on this?
No, I would move for approval of Joan Gordon to be appointed to the library board.
Second.
Right. Motion by Mary and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign tonight. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. I will say Joan has volunteered for the Tulip Festival and Cindy Verge had glowing, glowing recommendation for her. So we are excited to have her on our library board. All right. Item C tonight is another public hearing regarding code amendments to update our building fire procedures, permit expirations, and fee regulations. And so we have Rebecca Lowell here, who will present this particular item. I know council had a brief, well, not, I don't know about brief review, review of it last meeting, but I will turn it over to Rebecca at this point. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Yeah, so I, I'm going to try not to repeat everything that I discussed last week with council just because it could keep us here for quite some time. But as always, anyone, feel free to stop and ask additional questions if needed. So as you're aware, we have six different sections of our municipal code that are proposed to be amended this evening, starting with our building code, fire code, procedures, subdivisions, floodplain management, and then a handful of fee adjustments that we're asking for as well. So the first set of code amendments is in our building code, which is chapter 1504 of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. And really, this entire set of code amendments was brought about because the state updated the international building codes or what you will hear us call the I-codes is, is what that is. So every three years approximately, these codes are updated and every jurisdiction in the state of Washington is required by law to, to make sure that they are complying with that set of codes. At the same time, that same state law, although jurisdictions are not allowed to have code that is less stringent than the international codes, we are allowed to adopt amendments or things that are, might be a little bit different than the state requirements. And that's what we're here tonight really to focus on. And the crux of, I would say probably 80% of the amendments that are before council this evening really are those amendments to both the building code and the fire code. And, and by far are cleanups of, of past amendments that have been adopted. But substantively, there were a handful of items I just wanted to briefly review, starting with our building official who is on the line with us tonight, Mark Sniffin. And when we get to the, the fire code, we've also have our fire marshal is also with us tonight too. So if you did have questions, either one of them could chime in as well. So substantively, on the building code, our building official has asked, very similar to what a lot of jurisdictions do, to not have to issue a building permit for certain types of improvements that are really, are considered minor improvements. So these would be things like fences that are under seven feet in height, storage sheds that are 200 square feet or less, decks 30 inches or less above grade, residential re-roofs and window and door replacements. So those would no longer require a building permit, of course, if adopted. However, the items like your fences, your storage sheds and your decks, instead of having a building permit, they would now have a planning permit. But the intent of that planning permit is just to make sure that we don't have our folks building these types of facilities within setbacks, critical areas, or their buffers. Because that does happen and we don't want to see an influx of code enforcement cases because that's kind of the, the flip side of what could unfortunately happen. So if adopted, this would be a easier permit process. We're not requiring a technical building permit, but it would be an administrative review just so that we can make sure that we're not passing folks on to code enforcement, unfortunately. Secondly, and you'll see this throughout all of the codes that we're discussing tonight, we have asked for extensions of permit timelines in the building permit and in the fire. The expiration would be going from 180 days to two years with the ability to extend for an additional year. Also asking to extend, a TCO is a temporary certificate of occupancy. Currently, those expire after 30 days and we'd like to have those expire at 180 days. And then there is just pages and pages of code that is just no longer applicable. And that code may not be applicable for really a number of reasons. But primarily what happens is that as the city, you will see us adopt code that's needed. And then during the next code cycle, the building code council catches up, so to speak, and they adopt it into their code. So we don't want duplicative code in both places. So when that happens, it's important that we remove it out of our code because to the extent possible, we direct people to the, the building code to look for those things.
Rebecca, let's maybe do kind of one thing at a time.
Sure, absolutely.
Sorry, I should have told you that. Going back up to removed requirement for building permits for the following activities. Does council have any questions about that? And especially knowing our subject matter experts are also on the Zoom tonight. Any questions on that one? Okay, great. Any questions on the extension of the permit timeframes? Okay, great. Any questions on the extension of the permit timeframes? Or any concerns about that? Okay. And then any questions on the removal of the code that is no longer applicable? Okay, great. Go ahead, Rebecca.
All right, thank you. So that brings us to the fire code amendments. And again, very much the same as our building code, we've got a new version of the international fire code, and that is chapter 1508 of our Mount Vernon Municipal Code. Again, there's even more code in the fire code that's being removed than you than you would have seen in the building code. I just gave an example here of emergency responder radio coverage. Previously, we had that adopted into our code. The IFC has caught up, so to speak. And so there's no need to have that stay in our code as well. We've got the same permit expiration timeframes open. Actually, I'm going to stop because if you want to take these one by one, I'm sorry. I was getting on a roll there. Sorry.
Any questions? And I think for our new council members, you know, the the city adopts these codes like that are state law. And then so that's that's that difference where we're adopting kind of everything they do, and then our differences. So, okay, any questions? Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Rebecca.
All right. So like I've said, the same same thing with the expiration of the timeframes, very similar to what we see in the building code.
Great.
The type and format of our fire permits has been corrected to match what's required in our online permit system. You know, when we transferred over to our SmartGov online permitting system, gosh, it's been over a year now. It doesn't seem like it could be, but it has. The last set of permits that we took over was the fire permits. And so these aren't new requirements. But we had things in our old fire code that said things like, somebody needs to submit three paper copies of sets of plans. Of course, that's no longer needed. So that has been updated as well.
Any questions on that? Okay.
And then, last but not least, because number six is a duplicate, sorry, and I noticed that last week, too, and I still didn't fix it. So so number five was the address numbers and their specifications. No substantive change with that, but our fire marshal really went through and just clarified what's required, which is, of course, in the best interest of our applicants. We don't want them ordering address signs that aren't correct. So I think that will help with those standards.
Okay. And is that the review, Rebecca?
So that's for the fire code.
Okay. Any questions about the fire code? Okay, great.
All right. So I have a little bit of extra information that I didn't have with me at our committee meeting. The the fees that are being proposed, of course, we haven't changed. But as I stated last week, I wanted to give you just a little bit more background information on on some of these. So throughout both, actually, all the codes that are before you, staff is asking for, I think there's five or six different, like I'd say, broad topics of or broad categories of fee types to be updated. Later in the year, we do want to complete a complete overhaul of all of our fees, which is very much needed. But while we were in looking at these codes, there were a few that would be really very helpful if we could have updated now, knowing that later this year, of course, we'll be we'll be back and have other ones before you. So this first one is our hourly fees. Currently, and this could be, this is a fee that could be assessed from either the Planning Division, Engineering Division, Building Division, or our Fire Marshal. All four of our divisions have a handful of fees that that are just hourly charges. That fee currently is $75 an hour. And what we're asking is that 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 fee be increased to 125 an hour. Now, this this next bullet point I've got here, if you'll recall, there were a few of you on council in 2015, which was the last time we looked at just our engineering fees. And when we were doing that, we had we had looked at those four positions and figured out that it costs the city approximately $135 an hour for each of those types of employees. Now, of course, we all know we're not, we're not making $135 an hour. But just for the public that's watching, really what the direction at that point from our council was, which was really great, because we've got business owners, was, of course, to really look at it like you were running a business, to make sure that we were looking at salary benefits, our taxes, training, equipment, all of those things when determining what the true cost for our hourly, you know, to have us working on something for a developer for an hour, really, what does that cost the city? So in 2015, the the data that we had used was $135 an hour. Later this year, when we come back to you, we'll update that. I apologize, but I thought at least it was something to kind of benchmark some of these disinformation for you. So then what I did is I went and I looked at just some other jurisdictions. Not that it means that, of course, we don't have to be like everyone else, because we all have different needs and different reasons why policy decisions, you know, really would be made. But it's just, it's always an interesting comparison. So if we look at Mount Vernon with a proposed 125 an hour, obviously Burlington, I hadn't looked at their fee schedule recently, and they've recently updated it. They're at $150 an hour. You can see the rest that I've got listed here. Cedar Woolley was interesting. They had a different fee for their permitting staff, which was $50 an hour. But if they had their engineers involved, it went up to $85 an hour. And then just because I thought it was interesting, not that we're anything like Seattle, but I was really shocked at how much they charge. So their staff, if they are processing a land use permit, they're at $231 an hour. And if they have planning staff working on it, it's almost $400 an hour. So I thought that was, you know, gives you the way outside bracket of the extreme of that, which I thought was interesting. I think I'll stop there, maybe before I go on to the next set of fees.
Any thoughts about the this proposal from council?
I think we're we're pretty much in the game. I was kind of interested about Skagit County, why they have it 129?
60.
Are you kidding me?
No.
They've got it down to the penny?
Yeah, you know, it's really interesting. So Skagit County has adopted, then they adopted this maybe five or six years ago. And when I say that, it was probably longer ago than that. They actually, the direction from their commissioners to their permit department, as I understand it, was that they don't use any of their general fund to operate their version of development services. So they're engineering planners. And so they really do go through and they keep track of these things and update them. And so I'm assuming that's why they have some of their fees look like that. But yeah, I thought that was interesting, too.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's other questions, we'll keep going.
All right. So the the three other categories of fees that we were looking at that we had that are in the amendments before council, the first one was for pre-application meetings. And what we're asking is that those have a $500 fee that would be charged to an applicant when that when a land use application is actually submitted. So when somebody asks for a preapplication meeting, there wouldn't be the initial $500 fee. But when they came in later, and actually, if a project materialized, that that fee would be collected then. So since I knew that, well, fees is always something we try to keep an eye on, I've been keeping an average of really, how many hours do all of our staff spend on preapplication meetings from the intake all the way to the closeout? And really, what that was costing us, costing the city, is a little over $2,000 in staff time. And really, that's primarily because we have all of our subject matter folks at these meetings. So we have our fire marshal, our building official, planning staff, you name it, we have everyone there. I think it really is important that we really try, we have an emphasis on getting projects off on the right foot. I think it does help in the long run with that. And then we had two categories of floodplain development permits. Currently, we don't charge anything for these permits. And so what we were asking is that if it is a type of floodplain development permit that requires no elevation certificate, that there would be a $100 fee. And if it does require an elevation certificate, it would be $250. And you can see in the column to the right, the actual cost of what what it costs us when I look at how many hours it takes us to process those. And then last but not least, our fire marshal went through, and he really was able to simplify and take averages of all of our fire fees that will really help both staff and applicants be able to explain to applicants what they're going to need to pay, and programming some of our fees in there will just be really helpful. So those are in there as well.
Okay. Any questions on these particular items? I think that the preapplication meeting is very beneficial. I think we kind of, you know, maybe wittingly skewed it where folks are really coming in not prepared for such a detailed meeting. And I know that council has seen the actual memos that go out to those that participate. They're incredibly valuable before folks are beginning some really significant projects. So so hoping that there's some support there for for a fee for that.
So there were a few corrections, and I'm sorry, I really, I just cringe when we find these. But I'm glad that we found them right before you were coming in to adopt tonight. I think you'll you'll see that none of these are really substantive. But we did, we found three areas that I, with your permission, if the council chooses to adopt this ordinance, would need to be corrected. The first one is on the top of page five. And when I say page five, I mean, page five of the ordinance, if you look at the pages on the bottom. And what I've done is I've highlighted in yellow where it says delete. That was the building officials' little note to me to delete a portion of something there. And I accidentally left that in there. So I just need to remove the word delete with that one. The second one is on the middle of page 38, and where I've highlighted in yellow, that sentence needs to be stricken, because what it's referring to is already stricken in the building code. So it makes no sense. That was an edit that I didn't I didn't catch. And so that needs to be removed as well. Because if we left it, it would make no sense, because we're removing it out of the building code already. And then last but not least, I had a typo on this, where the solar system permits in the ordinance right now, I have it listed as $350, and it shouldn't be. It should be a $250 fee. So I, with the blessing of council, would ask that if adopted, I would make those changes to the ordinance as well. And then I've just got two more slides, unless there were questions on this one.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, actually, maybe three slides. But so next, we have our procedures code, which is chapter 1405. And really, this is the set of, this is our chapter of the municipal code that really ties all of our different land use regulations together. It outlines all of the procedures we go through. And importantly, it also outlines all of our permit types and submittal requirements. So with this, because we do need to, we'd like to add our fire permits, we already have our building permits, engineering permits, planning permits are already in this chapter. Currently, we have to refer applicants back to the international fire code to look for their permit types. And we'd like to have just one spot that they're looking for those. Again, as I discussed earlier, we need to add that administrative planning permit. If we choose to remove the building permit, it's what would be put in its place. We're, oh, I'm going to stop there. Bless it. I keep wanting to get ahead of myself. Sorry.
I could tell council jump in then if you have questions. Okay, keep going.
All right. With this one, we're also asking to extend the timeframe from 30 days to 90 days, when we've asked for resubmittal of items from applicants. We did find that our electronic signature requirements have actually changed in the last few years to make them easier to use, which is great. So I had to update the language in our code to make sure that it is actually reflecting those new laws. And again, it'll just make it easier to use those, which is good, good for us. And then, very similar to where I'm saying we're adding the fire permits, we're also adding the submittal tables that would be in the same format as all of our other types of permits are. So it really just makes it kind of that one, one place where all of that information is contained. So the subdivision and floodplain codes, while I was updating chapter 1405, and we were looking at expiration timelines, I did go and I looked in title 16, which is the title of our code that deals with subdivisions. And what I found was that we had quite a bit of subdivision expiration language that was no longer applicable. It really was remnants from our last recession, where the state had adopted a lot of extended timeframes. And so really, what we've done is just removed everything that's no longer applicable, and just replaced it with a reference back to state code, so that we won't have to hopefully amend that again. And then with our floodplain development regulations, FEMA, over the last several months, had asked that we add a requirement for outdoor machinery and equipment, so that it would be consistent with the NFIP FEMA regulations. And I'll just briefly mention this, I think I spoke about it last week. This is so important for our department, and this is one of the items that we are so vigilant with, because of the work that we do with our floodplain information. We are audited by FEMA, and the results of that audit is what drives the flood insurance rates that our public pays. So when FEMA asks us to do these types of things, we try to get it done very quickly, because we would never want to be in a position of having our public, their flood insurance rates go up, because we didn't process something that FEMA asked us to do. All right. Yeah, this really is, this is the last one. So just the process. I think, you know, I always have this slide for council. But with code amendments like this, there is quite a bit of process that we go through with notifications and state agencies. We did have a open record public hearing before the Planning Commission last week, and they recommended approval of the items that are before city council this evening. And with that, staff would also ask for your approval.
Okay. This has been an enormous cleanup project. And if council enjoyed your going through 84 pages of code, I think you can appreciate the job that Rebecca has done and staff in doing all of these, these upgrades to our code. So questions from city council on these?
Yeah, Rebecca, I got I got just a couple.
Sure.
The one I'm really liking is the building code amendments. And but when it when it's talking about to have an administrative site plan approval, how much are they charged for that? And what would that compare to if they just had to get a permit? Because, I mean, if you're if you're doing, these are definitely things that people are doing all the time, you know, the decks and the the reroofs and the and the fences. But I mean, if you're doing a residential reroof, why would you have to get an administrative site plan approval?
Oh, and I was like, no, you wouldn't for the, you wouldn't get that for the residential reroof, or the window and door replacement. There would be no need. So really, those two items that I've just put back up on the screen, D and E, those would just, you wouldn't have a permit at all. There's no, there's not a site plan that we look at with those. I'm sorry. I caused any confusion with that. It's really items. It's really items A through C. So really, only the items that where you would have exterior improvements where there could potentially be an issue would be items that we would look at for that.
Okay, and how, how much would those fees be versus a permit?
Sure. So our fence permit fee isn't going to change at all, and we charge a whopping $15 for those now. Which again, you know, and then tell you just honestly, that's, it doesn't even begin to actually cover what we do with those. But the storage sheds and the decks there, what we have in the, those types of permits, because it's, it's hard, hard to tell, honestly. We just have an hourly fee proposed for those. So I tell you, if something, and really what I envisioned with this is just being able to pull an aerial map for somebody. And if, say you were on a residential lot, and we knew that you had a 20-foot rear yard setback and a five-foot side yard. And if you're well outside those setbacks, and we can tell really easily that you're not anywhere near any critical areas, that is not going to take our staff, you know, maybe that's a half hour to go ahead and do that. So that's really, that's not going to be something that's difficult. It could be more difficult if somebody's at minimum setbacks, or let's say that they're on a, a type of a lot where it's never been surveyed, and we can't tell where your property lines are. Unfortunately, those can get more expensive. But I still would say that I think it's going to be cheaper than getting in code enforcement, you know, by, especially if somebody, when they put those types of improvements, like in a critical area or it's buffered, those can get way more expensive than it's going to be to have a spend an hour or so making sure that they're really keeping those out of areas they shouldn't be. Decks should be pretty simple as well. I mean, again, unless you're on a really small lot and you're close to your setbacks, that should be a, you know, a real quick and easy one for us to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there questions? Thanks for that, Gary, that was a good clarification on re-roofs and stuff. Okay. This is a public hearing. We did not receive anyone wishing, responded to the advertisement of the public hearing that wanted to comment tonight. We didn't receive any calls or written testimony. So since we have no one to speak, I guess we'll open and close the public hearing regarding these code amendments.
Well, I'd like to compliment Rebecca on the job that she did. I've gone through this, and really, I think anybody that's reading this code now, I think it's a lot simpler than it was prior. So I think, I think there was a great effort by Rebecca to get this done. And with that, I'd like to move the adoption of ordinance 3825, as corrected by Rebecca during the meeting.
Okay, second. Motion by Mark and a second by Melissa.
Clarification, does it go into effect as soon as we pass it and you sign it, Madam Mayor? Is that, is that the date?
It's actually, it's five days after it's published. So it'll be routed for signatures and then published, and then it's five days, five days after publication.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, any opposed tonight? All right, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, for all of that work and all the other staff that helped out, including Barry and Mark for being here tonight as well. So, all right. Moving on then, item D is to set a public hearing date for proposed street vacation, and Rebecca's going to explain this one as well.
All right, thank you again. So staff is asking for approval of a resolution that will set a public hearing date on March 24th for a proposed street vacation of an approximate 500-square-foot area of right-of-way that abuts the south property line of 425 South 10th Street. I know we don't, we don't receive these or process these all that often. This is a, it's just, it's a really old statute, this right-of-way vacation one is, where they actually require us to come to you to ask you to set, set a date for a hearing before the hearing. So just interesting, so we're not discussing the merits tonight, I'm really just asking you to set that date. And then on March 24th, we'll be presenting the proposed street vacation to you.
Any questions for Rebecca on this? And it is actually required to be a resolution. Go ahead, Melissa.
I was just going to say that I'd like to council authorize the mayor to sign the accompanying resolution.
Second.
All right, so it's a motion by Melissa, second by Mary, and clarifying it would be resolution number 988. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed tonight is same sign. All right, motion carries, thank you. We'll be back in a few weeks. All right, item D, or sorry, I E. tonight is an amendment to professional services agreement for bridge loading rating services, and Bill Bullock, our city engineer, is here to present this item. Bill?
Good evening, council. So we have about 13 bridges in Mount Vernon that we have, the county does our inspections and recordings for us on all of that. This is bridge load rating, which is an inspection that reverse engineers the bridge to, to give it a serviceable load rating. We are required to do these, these are the last six bridges to do. We've hired TranTech in the past, I believe we started hiring their services in 2016, and this will complete our bridge load ratings for, I think, the next 10 or 15 years. So we do have this budgeted, and we have a proposal from TranTech to finish this work for us, and probably be done by midsummer. Any questions?
Okay, questions for Bill on this? All right.
I'd like to, I recommend that the council authorize the mayor to execute this amendment to the agreement with TranTech Engineering.
Second.
I'll second a motion.
Okay, motion by Mary, we'll give a second to Juan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, same sign tonight. All right, motion carries, thank you. Item F is our acceptance of a proposal for 2021 to 22, 22 on-call materials testing, and Bill's got this one as well.
Thank you. Very much like what Chris did the last meeting, I believe, this is an on-call, an on-call contract for materials testing that Public Works uses, most commonly done with earthwork and concrete work and asphalt paving. So when we do our asphalt paving program, there's a number of tests we have to do on the asphalt to make sure it meets its compliance with the materials requirement. And so this will be for a maximum of $10,000, and we will be able to use this for a variety of services we need throughout the year.
Okay, questions for Bill on this particular item?
I would move the council accept the proposal by materials and testing consulting of Burlington.
Second.
Second motion.
Thank you. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, any opposed tonight? All right, motion carries, thank you so much. Thank you, Bill. All right, under for the good of the order tonight, or we have our COVID-19 pandemic response and discussion, and then, as you recall earlier, I was going to shift a discussion about a facility's urgent issue for Chris Phillips to present. Under the COVID, pan, COVID-19 pandemic response, I think we've probably all been following the council's availability of actual vaccine has really been frustrating, I think, for most everyone here in our county. Was able to forward some statistics to council. What I was most interested in was, looks like 14% of our population in Skagit County have at least initiated the first dose, which is good on the news. Last night, they showed a few of the larger counties and were actually a point or two better, so that was, that was encouraging to hear. And really do believe that that vaccine will start, you know, showing up a little bit more and more, knowing that our county is ready to administer as soon as we get there. I do know as well, and I think we've mentioned this before, that that distribution is very decentralized. So sometimes folks think Skagit County Public Health knows exactly how much we're getting and who's getting it with all the providers, but they don't. And so doctors' offices, different pharmacies, and the county can all be administering vaccinations, which makes it even more frustrating for folks trying to get appointments. So just hopefully, folks can keep in touch with either their primary care providers or looking at public health distributions. I know Skagit cleaners came out with the ability to help seniors, especially with technology issues and trying to find appointments online, so I want to really commend Skagit cleaners for doing that. But if we're, I really think we'll see a better distribution of vaccines in the coming weeks. So nothing really specific other than sharing that some of our public safety staff have continued to receive some vaccines, and so that's good news for, for them. Any questions from council? Okay. With that, I'm going to see if Chris is on, and I know he was having some connectivity issues, so, Chris, are you there and are you ready to talk roofing? There we go. Okay, I see your slides, Chris, but I don't hear you, maybe you're muted on your phone. Okay, let's see.
How about?
Oh.
How about now?
There you go, we can hear you now.
Okay, all righty. Yeah, so I've got some, some computer issues at the moment and dialing in, so I can see everything but talking on the phone. So we've had, I know some of the council members have already talked with Director Kleppi concerning the leak that we had at the, our roof leak that we had, and we've also have some issues over at the HR office. Next slide. Okay, so the roof area that I'm talking about, back in 2016, if you look at this, we've, we had some roof work that was completed on Fire Station 1, and then we have two other roofs that were completed at, at that particular time that I've got red arrows pointed to. In the area that's yellow and green, or maybe a powder blue, those are, that portion of the roof was not completed back in, in late 2015, 16. And these areas include the HR offices or above the HR offices, the mayor's office and conference room, the attorney's office, the lobby, and then the IS office or IS director's office and, and the server room. And basically, what you have there is roof number two is approximately six feet higher than roof number three, and roof number three is a few feet higher than the roof that sits above the lobby area, if you're familiar again with City Hall. And so the issues that this presents is the building is old. We've got a variety of, of equipment that when it was reinstalled, when HVAC system, if you recall, back in 2017, we had about four units on top of our roof at City Hall that were replaced, and when we replaced those, I have earlier, later pictures that show that we put them on a, on a jack system so that the, the jack actually lifts the unit above the roof instead of it being screwed in, if you will, to the roof. And what we've got above the server room and above the HR office are older units, probably 25 to 30 years old, that are just that. They're screwed right into the, to the roof, and they require a little bit more, well, they're requiring attention just because the roof is old. So if I can go to the next, next slide there, Doug. So what I have here pointed to you are just those areas where you can see the jacks where the equipment has been lifted up. But what was done at that particular time by a contractor in 2017 was just these, these small patches to the roof. And in, in one area above the server room, they, they did not seal a, one of the accesses into that particular area. On the right-hand photo, this just shows again an old contact up on the roof that, again, you can see the, just the level of, of disrepair that's there on this particular structure. Next slide. This again, just shows you there's a trowel on the left-hand side here, some of the old work that was done up there, you, you, you see where the seams are. The one that's there with the trowel, we, we did address, just so you know. And then the one to the right, again, just gives you an idea of, you know, the level of some of the decay up there as it relates to some of the HVAC equipment, and then the, the old seals and patches that have been done over the last 25 to 30 years. You can just get a, get an idea of what that looks like. Next slide. And here, here are just a few more, and what I wanted to share with you, with the new work that's been done, you can kind of see on the right-hand side there, the right, the, the jacks that lift the equipment above the roof, and, and again, the material that's been put over that to, to seal it, and, you know, no issues are, are associated with the new equipment that, or the newer equipment that was installed in the 2017 timeframe. On the right, or I'm sorry, on the left, you can see one of the roof drains that's up there that is just in a failing state, if you will, as it relates to its, its purpose on the roof. And again, we get the freak snowstorm of 10 to 15 inches of snow that we realized, followed by a fairly significant thaw, followed by rain. And the roof structure that we have up there is basically like it wa, like the police station, okay? We've got four different roofs over there, and if you recall, all of those are fixed. You appropriated money to get those projects done over the last four years. And just to let you know, zero, zero leakage over at the police station. Everything that we did over there, we're taking those lessons learned and incorporating it here with this request to fix this roof. Next slide. Here is the interior of the HR director's office. She is no longer in that particular office, but this sprung a leak a few weeks ago, just prior to the snowstorm, began rather significant damage to the insulation, the roofing material, the lights that were in there. Fortunately, there was no damage done to any of the office equipment that was there. We were able to secure it, and with this being open, we've been able to, again, address where we needed to have the patch, temporary patches in, and we've been monitoring those over the last few weeks before the snowstorm hit, just to make sure that they, they held before putting this office back together. Next slide. This is a picture of the assistant HR, or, I'm sorry, HR assistant's office where current, where Erin currently resides. What happened here was after she moved out of that room, the ceiling issues with, with water leakage coming from the roof continue to materialize. This could have been from a newer leak. We think we got everything, it hasn't been leaking for the last few weeks, or it could have been residual water that was associated with the, shoot, I'm drawing a blank here. The material there to provide protection for heating, insulation, there we go, sorry about that, senior moment, pardon me. Juan, you don't have to worry about those, but that was a senior moment for me. The insulation, it retains the water, and just over days, it will, again, just begin to cause leak damage in there. So the proposal here is we'll be opening that section of the roof up as, or room up as well, once Erin's out of there, to see what damage is in. From what we could tell from the HR's office, looking through the raptors, it looked to be minimal, but at a, at a minimal state, we need to make sure that we get the bad insulation out of there, re-insulate that particular area. And then what we're going to do in this particular roof is just have access panels, because there is no access, there are no access panels in any of the office spaces located on the second floor, just the way that construction- in any of the office spaces located on the second floor, just the way the construction of the, the roof is. But we're going to have those in there now, so that we can perform or inspect during heavy rain situations, just that we can gain access to these particular areas. Next slide. This was the damage that happened most recently with the snowstorm in our server room. Again, this was caught by our city IS staff, Director Kleppi, and then our maintenance staff that came in to assist. But there was a, a variety of leaks that were coming in from, from this particular area. Again, no damage to any of the equipment that was in there. We've had a contractor go in and open this area up, just to, again, take it and take a look and see what's going on. And we'll go from there. Next slide. You can go to the next slide. Okay. So where we are now is, I've worked with two roofing folks, two contractors, to assist me in just taking an inspection and taking a look, so that I could be able to craft a, an RFP for bid. This again is something that was not included in this year's 2021 budget. This is an expenditure outside of that. Again, they will look at replacing any of the bad roofing boards, materials up there, replacing it with this quarter dens deck roof boards. And again, this adds a structural integrity to the roof that is needed. Again, the last time that I could tell was somewhere between 25 and 30 years that any work had been done up there. The roofing material is, and is very similar to, as I mentioned, what was installed over at the police station. We've had good, again, these first two items of what we did exactly over at the police station and worked, worked very well. The parapet roof encapsulation, I got a picture of that coming up, so I can show you that. But basically, it puts a, if you want to think about like a monolithic slab, it puts something from corner to corner, all the way around the roof, and just encapsulates it so that no water can get in there. And then the idea here is, is having three of the HVAC pieces of equipment that, again, were not replaced back in 2017. We'll, we'll need a crane to go ahead and do lifts to get them off, or stop the, or not to be mounted directly to the roof, install the footers in there, make sure that it's watertight, and then reinstall those, those pieces of equipment. Next slide. What it'll look like when it's completed, looks like this. Again, completely encapsulated, no seams. The seams that are there, that you can see visually, are just cuts that were made to the TPO. They are, they are basically heated and then sealed with another product on top of them. These were a series of vents that were over at the police court campus. Next slide. And then as we talk about the parapet, if you want to look at the, the picture on the right, it basically takes a, a metal strip over the top of the wall unit there, a cant strip, which basically, again, just puts it at an angle. And then all of that is covered with, with the TPO. And that just forms that membrane. Another thing that we have installed here is, much like we did at the police station, we will have roof drains, because right now we only have one drain up on the roof, as hard as it is to believe up there. We're going to bring this into the 21st century. We recommend that drains be in there, scuppers will be installed. And then we're going to put crickets to direct the water in a variety of locations, so that it, it does not pool on top of this flat roof structure, that we actually get the water to the drains, and then ultimately to our stormwater system. So we have a plan to do that as well. Next slide. I think that might be it. Okay. So these are estimated costs that we believe right now, without really being able to dig into some of these areas for the rooms, again, estimates. But they'll, they'll include ceiling repair, electrical wiring repair, some of the lights is where the water was actually coming through, internal HVAC ducting repair in some cases, and then lighting there, and then the insulation replacement. So again, for both offices. And then for the server room, those are the estimated costs there, very similar work that would need to be done in those offices. And I think that is the last slide.
So for council, of course, we, it's not budgeted. We can absorb some of the repairs, of course, in, but we can't absorb the roof repair amount. So we wanted to come to council before we did more work on this, and, and ask if you're supportive of us moving forward on this. So.
I, I have a couple of questions and, and probably a comment at the end. I think the roof was, was that 214,000, Chris?
Yeah, it, it varied. The low was 214, the high was somewhere around like the 230,000. And again.
I was figuring it's going to come out about 240. We've done two commercial roofs in the last few years. So I'm, I'm pretty familiar with what you're talking about. So we're looking at probably a total cost of between 280 and 300. Is that what we're looking at?
Correct.
With the, with the interior repairs.
Correct.
On that roof, are we going to do a complete tear-off and, and re-sheat it before we put that membrane down? Or are we going over the top of what's existing? I didn't quite, that wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, the membrane roof would be taken off. So there, there would be the old part of the building. This is exactly what we did over at the police station. Once they pull that off, they're going to get that off of there, put the new dry deck down, and, and then go from there.
Okay. So basically, we're doing a complete roof over that section, then.
Right.
Which is, which is the right way to do it.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we've, we, we thought we were going to get away without doing it. And soon as we pulled everything off, we found out everything underneath it needed to be replaced. So if we're already figuring that, that's, that's a proper, a proper calculation with these flat roofs. So I guess my statement would be, you know, we, we don't have any choice. We have to make these repairs. I'd encourage the rest of the council to, to allow the staff and the mayor to move forward. We do have a fund balance. If we need to tap that, we can do a budget amendment. But our fund balance is there for these types of emergencies, and, and you can't calculate or, or budget these kind of emergencies. So I was, I would recommend that we move forward with doing the repairs. We can, we can either look at utilizing some of the fund balance to do that, or see how revenues come in. But I think we can fund it.
Okay. Other thoughts from council? I asked staff to do a certain amount of work to a certain point, but then to come to you before we did anything else. So Gary, did you?
Yeah. Is there any, are we covered by insurance on the interior at all?
That I would, we'd have to look.
I guess, yeah, I can, I can work with, I guess it would either be Peter or Kevin as it relates to WCIA, and, and see what, what's involved there. Like I said, the good thing is, is that no real damage to equipment was done. But again, to the interior, you saw the pictures there. But that's, that's a great questionnaire, Councilwoman, and I'll look into that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Gary, if I, and Kevin wasn't able to attend tonight, but if I recall, our deductible is fairly high. But we'll just, we'll check into it and let you know.
Sounds good.
Okay. So if there isn't any opposition, we'll move forward and then bring some, some expenses back to city council, and Doug can recommend funding for that. And if we need a budget amendment, et cetera. Does that sound all right with council? We'll move ahead? Okay. Great. Appreciate that. I think, thank you, Chris, for the presentation.
Thanks, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Kevin is not here, and we do not have a need for an executive session. We have completed our agenda items. So with that, we will be adjourned at 8:20. Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.